Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the attendance?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before I move too far into the agenda, um, city staff has been working with the Dyke and Drainage District and Irrigation Improvement District, number twelve, to secure easement across their property. And just this afternoon, the Dyke District took some action. And so I would like to put that on the agenda this evening. Um, and I'm just asking the council if that is something that you would, uh, move to accept and add to the agenda as item number five C.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Walters?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moulton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we will add that, um, discussion, the easement and right-of-way agreement to item five C. All right. So now this time, I will move on to announcements and committee reports, and I will start with a COVID update. As of yesterday, in Skagit County, we had one thousand sixty-two positive cases. We've had ninety-five people hospitalized. We've had twenty-two deaths. Uh, Anacortes still stands at zero deaths, and I could not get a, a new count on cases today from the hospital, but by next week or by Wednesday, I will probably receive that. The total cases in Washington State as of yesterday were seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six cases, with a total of nineteen hundred and ninety-one deaths. Uh, we must stay vigilant, even though they believe that the cases are starting to steady decline or, or flatten a bit. But over the last three weeks in Washington State, every day we've had between ten to fifteen deaths. Every day. Today, um, and then on the COVID-related, uh, how it affected our community, today was the first day of school. Everyone back to school today, but they went back to school with an online platform. So every child in Anacortes was at home with a desk and a, a computer at their desk. And so I, today is the day that parents now carry the IT burden and the lunchroom duties for all of our students. So I think it's just, if you have a neighbor with children in school, um, reach out to them, moral support, a lunch, something. I think it's a really big deal. I know the school district has worked really hard to make this work, um, and they're doing the best they can during these COVID times. Um, and then last Friday, the final part of my report is last Friday, Governor Inslee, um, allowed, made a new allowance for gyms, yoga, and indoor fitness operations to provide, um, personal fitness, group class fitness and training, as long as they limited the occupancy and the physical distancing in their operations. So that was something new added to how those businesses and facilities can, um, operate. And that's what I have this evening, and I will have more on Wednesday at my Wednesday briefing. So, any questions? Okay. So we'll move on then to item two B, which is our finance committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, the finance committee met last week, and the primary item under discussion was, um, the, I guess, the refinancing of the bonds from the, the water treatment plant's construction from roughly ten years ago. Um, so those, and this was also, you know, the presentation that we got from, uh, from the, the bond market folks with, uh, with Mr. Huglan last week. So just kind of a reminder that, that the bonds are currently at a, at a roughly five to six percent interest rate, and there's, we're, we're gonna be able to get them refinanced at below three percent, um, and about eight million dollars to be refinanced, uh, in, in the initial ones, so significant savings, um, just, you know, cutting the interest rate in half on that. Um, we're also, we're gonna have new bond issues coming up for, uh, for the sewer outfall, um, another one for, for water for out, uh, the sewer outfall one is gonna be roughly, um, a ten million dollar bond. And, um, and we're in conversations with the Department of Energy to get grants, so we're not sure exactly what the, the final price of that one's gonna be because of the, uh, the grant, potential grant amount. Um, and again, you know, really good, uh, financing rates as well right now. Um, second big one is the, the Clearwell and redundant water intake pipe at the water treatment plant. So, as you all know, we've got the single intake pipe that is on the west side of the Skagit River, and it pulls water, uh, you know, across the bottom of the river and into the water treatment plant. And if that intake pipe were to fail, we would have no, no means of getting water into the water treatment plant and then into the system itself. So, creating that, that redundant pipe and then the, the second Clearwell as well for, the Clearwell is basically where, uh, you know, it's a big cleaning tank, if you will. Uh, that's gonna be about a twelve million dollar bond. Um, and then, third item is adding, potentially adding, uh, the Crowley sensors project to this where, um, as, as a part of like, any EPA mandate for, for, uh, risk mitigation, uh, to be able to use that to, that Crowley technology to create a, like a monitoring perimeter that detects, uh, detects not only leaks, but also like vibrations and, and other vulnerabilities, like if, uh, if there were an intrusion or something like that. Uh, let's see, the other items sort of outside of bonds, um, a brief discussion on the, the budget calendar for the end of the year here where, basically, the, the rough timeline looks like, uh, departments are gonna be asked to bring their sort of initial budgets due, um, around the end of this week. And then the kind of first discussion with council around October fifth. And then the actual budget public hearing and discussion of revenue sources on October twelfth is kind of the, the timeline that we're looking at, and that would include the one percent property tax increase. Um, and then kind of detailed council review on sessions on the October nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and the first, um, meeting in November. So that's, uh, that's finance committee meeting. Uh, Mr. Carter, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I covered it pretty well, thank you.
Very comprehensive. So, um, the next item is item two C. It's our fiber committee.
Mayor Gear, I could go again?
Go.
All right, the fiber committee met, uh, last week, and it was, um, similar to, to other discussions, we, we first kind of, we went through the, the latest numbers, um, and I'll give kind of the highlights in a sec. Um, and we also covered kind of the, the two thousand and twenty aerial expansion updates, sort of the schedule where, um, the six zones of aerial expansion are all kind of, it's all in the, the east end of town where, um, all of the blocks and streets that are served by aerial utilities. So these are the lowest cost neighborhoods to build fiber to. Um, and that's about, the projection is to pass an additional thirteen hundred addresses by the end of the year. So, um, that would be, we will have then passed about twenty-three hundred total addresses across the city, which is, um, about a third of the city as far as addresses passed. And then we got a bit of a discussion on two thousand and twenty-one expansion where they're looking at underground, um, again, on the east end of town for two thousand and twenty-one, where a lot of the east end of town, the, the drilling is gonna be actually simpler than the west end of town, where it's, it's mostly soft dirt that they, they would be drilling through. Um, so that expansion design has, they're, they're in the planning stages of, uh, on that, on that expansion. Um, and also working on applying for grants, including, um, grant where the, the federal government is working on a, like a broadband program, and we're hoping if that, if that comes through, that we can apply for, for grant funding from that as well. So, and then as for the, the latest numbers, as of last Thursday, we were at a total of three hundred and three total customers, which is, is pretty good in, you know, in January, February, we had zero. So, three hundred customers, we're a, we're a real fiber optic network and a real ISP at this point. Um, monthly revenue of just shy of twenty-one thousand dollars per month. Oh, I should mention, the customers, it's about two hundred and forty-three of residential at sixty business customers. And then from a take rate or sort of market share standpoint, in the central business district, we're actually at forty, just below forty-two percent market share. So, uh, that's forty-two percent of central business district customers are, are signed up for city of Anacortes internet service. And of a total of two hundred and fifty-five potential customers, we've got a hundred and six are signed up and ninety are actually connected. So this is a, this is a really good win to be exceeding our, you know, our, our business model and plan was to exceed thirty-five percent market share. In Old Town, we're at thirty-seven point five percent signups, um, and we've connected about eighty-three percent of those. So again, we've exceeded the target. And then in M Avenue, we're just short of target, at just, just shy of thirty-two percent of signups. And then the aerial expansion zones, um, through, you know, that additional thirteen hundred, uh, addresses, we're in the range of kind of thirteen to eighteen percent signups in there. So that's also looking strong as, uh, construction, we're gonna be breaking ground very soon, or I guess not really breaking ground, but you know, running the fiber backbone and following on to do installations in those zones, hopefully, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks. That's the fiber update for now.
All right. Any additional comments or questions? All right. So then we'll move on to public comment, and if there's anyone that would like to speak to the pub, uh, to the council, this is your opportunity at this time. All right, I don't see any, any hands up, so we'll move on to, um, item four, our consent agenda, items four A and B.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I'd like to, um, make an amendment to the minutes, um, to include, uh, a statement that I think I sent to Ms., um, Marcia, and, uh, I can read it out. I just would say that... Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Basically, I said that Councilman Young cautioned and asked questions concerning the appearance of fairness doctrine and the gifting of public funds as it related to the train. I think that's important to be in the meetings because I think that's the crust of our discussion, trying to make sure that the process goes forward, and we just wanted to make sure we didn't run awry, so those are the reasons we were asking those questions.
So you, um, so I guess, um, Marcia, this is a procedural question. Do I need to have a motion to add those, or can that just be corrected, and then they can approve them with that if they'd like?
Technically, we should pull the minutes off of the consent agenda and then make a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay. So Mr. Young, was that you? So we're gonna pull the minutes off the agenda, so is, was that what, really what you were asking me to do?
Absolutely, and then, okay.
Well, we'll do that, we'll set that aside for a moment, then we'll, we'll continue on with approving the consent agenda, um, uh, four, four B, and then we'll go back to the minutes, all right?
Absolutely.
So do I have a motion to approve four B?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Uh, I move to approve the consent agenda, item four B.
Thank you.
Second.
The second. So we, motion by Miller, a second by Young, to approve item four B, which is our approval of claims. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, so now we're bringing the minutes back to Mr. Young, and, Mr. Young, you, you are saying that we, we need to, something was left out of the minute.
Yes.
And Marcia, did you capture what he said earlier?
Yes. If Mr. Young would just like to move to amend the minutes as his, as he had stated, someone could second that and we could take action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marcia.
Do that, Mr. Young?
Yes, I, I actually, um, moved to amend the minutes as I stated, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
So who is my first second? Was that Mr. McDougal? No? Mr. Carter?
Maybe Mr. Carter.
Right. So we have motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to amend the minutes to September eighth, with a verbiage that Mr. Young already stated. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, we'll move on then, we've done that. All right. So now we're gonna move to other business. Um, item five A, which is open for public comment, and this is ordinance thirty seventy-three, establishing an annual budget process, providing separability and establishing an effective date, a discussion with possible action, and this discussion will be led by Mr. Huglan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. Um, here is the, the proposed ordinance. This would repeal ordinance twenty-nine seventy-three, which was the ordinance that established the biennial budget process. So the, the, the process is, uh, this ordinance would repeal the biennial budget process. It would go into effect the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Uh, and at that time, the, uh, annual budget process would take effect the following day, January, January first, two thousand and twenty. And I tried to make that clear in section one, or the, these two sections down here. So it's, uh, it's RCW Chapter thirty-five, eight thirty-three that establishes or that authorizes an annual budget process. It's thirty-five, eight thirty-four that establishes the biennial budget process. Uh, so I tried to make it clear in this section that, uh, ordinance twenty-nine seventy-three and the associated biennial budget process would be repealed effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, provided that the adoption of a budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one has taken place, has authorized in Chapter thirty-five, eight thirty-three. And so again, the effective date would be, um, this ordinance would be adopted now, but would be effective as of the last date of the year. Um, so we've talked about this a couple of times. Uh, it's, it seems prudent during this time when there's a lot of uncertainty, it's expected that we'll probably wanna be, um, be able to, you know, move quickly, be nimble, if you will, to make, uh, to make changes. It seemed like an appropriate thing to do for the next two years. So, uh, you may remember, I'm sure you remember, the biennial budget process runs from a odd year through an even year. So this annual budget process will have to be in place for at least the next two years, and then, uh, two years from now, actually, a little less than two years from now, if council wanted to go back to the biennial budget process, we could adopt an ordinance re-establishing that biennial budget process. To be happy to try and answer any questions council may have.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Uh, Mr. Huglan, would you just go just a little bit further? I, I totally understand that we are truly in uncertain terms times, given COVID, given the economics of everything that's taking place, the long-term as well as short-term impacts. This, just like you said, allows us to be a bit more nimble as a city and to be able to make changes that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to make as quickly. And if at any point going forward, we want to, um, revert back, we could, but we would, it would be about a year and a half into the process.
Correct, and that's, and it's, it's a good point. We, we had, uh, a number of discussions about this, uh, about ways that we could, you know, continue to use that biennial budget process. Um, the, the challenge, trying to, trying to project out, you know, more than twenty-four months from now, what the economy is gonna look like and trying to establish revenue projections, expenditure projections for that time, uh, it's hard enough just trying to think of, you know, six months down the road from now, what it's gonna look like. And, and we talked about things like we could adopt a budget with just kind of a blank budget for the following year and then just fill it in later, but ultimately, through some of the internal discussions we had, this made the most sense for us to go ahead and revert to an annual budget. And then I believe, uh, to revert back to a biennial budget process, I believe that the ordinance to establish that biennial process has to be done by, um, by the end of June, the year before that biennial budget, or before the next odd year when a biennial budget would start. So, um, about a year and a half from now is when we would be, or, or less, actually, I guess, than, than a year and a half from now, to have those conversations about going back to a biennial budget.
Mayor Gear? Mayor Gear?
Oh, Mr. Mil, uh, Walters, yes, go ahead.
Uh, the ordinance as presented works for me, and I appreciate Mr. Huglan's careful drafting there. Um, we've talked about this a couple of times, so maybe we don't need to belabor it, but I just wanna say that the reason I support switching back to an annual budget is because my goals for the biennial budget were never really accomplished, and that was to have a built-in rollover for projects, especially public works projects that take more than one year. That's because our financial software just doesn't support a two-year budget, so we had to do two one-year budgets anyway. And also, I had expected that we would be able to double the amount of time we were spending on constructing the budget to be able to create a more thoughtful budget, but we really weren't able to do that or didn't do that either. So I don't see any downside to going back to an annual budget. I also don't see really a, a whole lot of upside, except that it's just a little bit simpler since we were doing two annual budgets anyway. So I move approval of the ordinance as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton. Is there any other comments or discussion?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just, uh, I meant when, uh, Mr. McDougal gave the finance report, uh, what's the date again, the department heads and, and, uh, need to have the budget inputs in, as well as, are we gonna expect to have a good timeline, uh, on our budget process? As you, we usually do a pretty good job, just hoping, uh, we'll be able to do that.
This week, um, they'll have their first, um, initial round, too.
Oh, look at that.
Yes, Mr. Huglan, I asked him to bring that forward for the council, so...
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for that. Um, so we'll get this published out, and I actually believe that, uh, Ms. Hunt has already got this, uh, published, but, so this is kind of the, the timeframe that we're in, uh, that we're in right now. Um, working through the revenue projections, um, getting the departmental budgets established, and then, uh, next week, we'll start going through this with the mayor. We'll, um, spend, uh, the week of, uh, the twenty-second through the twenty-ninth, uh, drafting the mayor's budget message, and the plan is to come back on October fifth with the budget message. And then you can see, uh, the month of October is all about budget. We've got something scheduled every council meeting. Uh, and of course, this can change. Maybe, um, we will just whistle right through all of the budget requests, and we could get done on the twelfth and have the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth off, but we do have those, uh, nights blocked out, uh, just, just in case. And then, um, the public hearing on the budget, there's, sorry, so two public hearings required. Public hearing on revenue sources, which is scheduled for October twelfth, and then the public hearing on the full budget, October twenty-sixth, um, and then, um, continuing on into November, the, um, property tax request is due to Skagit County by the end of November. The budget is required to be adopted by the end of the year. I penciled in both of those dates at the end of November, but of course, we've got some flexibility there.
So great, thank, thank you very much. Of course, I, I support this amendment, and I just thought it'd be important to, to lay out the timeline, for us to see the timeline as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second, motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton, for, to accept ordinance, uh, to approve ordinance thirty seventy-three. Ms., um, Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, Ms. Hunt?
Yes, you've joined us.
Mayor. Uh, this is Christine Cleland McGrath. I just wanted to let, uh, Ms. Hunt know that I, uh, came in during the COVID, uh, review, so I apologize for my tardiness, but I am here.
So, and your vote on ordinance three zero seven three would be?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to item five B. Also open for public comment, and this is ordinance thirty seventy-five, the revenue bond, and we're hoping to take action this evening. Mr. Huglan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I put together a couple of slides, so this is the same material that we've been talking about for a while. We had the first review of the bond ordinance last week. I put together a couple of slides just to summarize and illustrate, uh, what we're using that money for and, and a few of the broader details. Um, but this ordinance will authorize the sale of bonds, revenue bonds, up to forty-eight point one million. That's up to, that would be the, the, the ceiling on the ordinance. Um, it's a revenue bond, so the debt service will be made with utility user fees, not tax revenues. Uh, and as Mr. McDougal was describing earlier, three-part, um, three-part bond issue, really. So it's getting new money for the water utility, for the raw water line and Clearwell project, the property purchase, and the risk and resiliency detection system, also new money for the sewer utility, for the new plant, outfall project. And that in itself is kind of a two-part project as well. We've identified in the bond ordinance up to twenty million dollars for that project. The, the plan at this point is to issue ten million dollars in revenue bonds to begin with, to provide funding for that project, as we continue to work with Department of Ecology to obtain grants. Hopefully, a, a large portion of the rest of that project can be, um, paid for with grant funds. But, um, this is also kind of a long-term project. This is the same strategy we used with the water treatment plant back in two thousand and ten, where we issued bonds that we knew we would need in two thousand and ten. We issued forty million dollars in bond, and we used that, uh, for a year or two as we went and looked for other funding sources, which we did find some. We got a couple of public works trust fund loans at very favorable interest rates. Um, and then, a couple of years into the project, we had a very good idea of how much money we would need to finish off the project, and we did a second bond issue. So that's e- exactly what we're thinking of for this as well, so up to twenty million dollars in two phases for the sewer utility. Then the third part of the bond issue would be to refund the two thousand and ten bonds. The, um, breakdown of the, the funding looks like, looks like this. Um, the maximum amount of the bonds, forty-eight point one million. We've estimated or built into the estimate a potential discount of the bonds of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. Um, so, the forty-seven point one three eight million is the sum of these elements below here. So twelve million for the raw water Clearwell, hundred, five hundred thousand for the land, five hundred thousand for the risk and resiliency system, twenty million for the sewer outfall, and then, uh, thirteen point seven million, uh, for the refunding. So we, uh, we had talked, uh, initially about taking all of the money that we had from the refinery pay ahead and putting that all onto this bond. As we've been, um, talking with our financial advisors, um, PFM advisors, uh, in fact, I would point out that Duncan Brown from PFM is on the line, as well as Alice Ostiak from, uh, our bond council is on the line as well. Uh, they were gracious enough to join us again tonight to answer questions, so, um, but we, we changed strategy a little bit after, um, PFM did some, some additional analysis on, uh, kind of the, the risk, the interest rate risk over the next year or two. Uh, it looked like it made sense to put a little less money on the, uh, current bond and save some of that pay ahead cash for two years from now, when the two thousand and twelve bond will become, uh, callable, and then use that money to refund a larger portion of the two thousand and twelve bond. So, uh, that's, this fourteen point five million city contribution, that's out of the roughly twenty million in pay ha, pay ahead cash that the city has on hand. Um, and I know that's a lot of moving parts there and kind of complicated. I'm sure I, I, I'm sure you may have questions about that, we'd be happy to try and answer.
Oh, yes. Mr. Young?
Uh, yes. Mr. Huglan, would you elaborate just a little bit more on the advantage for us in doing this at this time? Uh, just because there may be some... Uh, just because there may be some constituents, um, that may have missed the prior discussion that we had. And, um, and I, I think it would be of benefit just to elaborate a little bit of, about the time use of money that we have right now, given the interest rates and, you know, the possibilities of how that will save our city by taking this action that we're taking.
Right, right. So the existing bonds, uh, the bonds that are, that are left, it's a 20-year bond that was issued in, in 2010. So the, the bonds that are left, the 2000, or, or, sorry, years 11 through 20, those interest rates range from 5.5% to 6.5%. And, uh, in the, in the bond market right now, our advisors are, um, telling us that we could probably obtain money for closer to 3%. Um, so, you know, effectively cutting that, that interest rate in half. Um, the bonds are not, are not callable the first 10 years of the issue. So that's why we're looking at this now. It's, it's great timing for us because the rates in the bond market now are so favorable. Uh, and what we have, uh, been, been told by our advisors is that timeframe that we're looking at to get into the market is kind of early October timeframe, or it is, um, probably a good time in, in the context of the full year as well, um, especially with an election coming up in November. Um, they're anticipating the bond market to get more, um, have more activity later in the year. So there, uh, there's a good sense that there would be, um, a little more, maybe more appetite for bonds in the timeframe that we're looking to go into the market.
Um, Mr. Hogland, I have a question. So the, we had 20 million set aside for pay ahead, is that correct?
Correct.
So you are suggesting that we hold on to 5.5 million for the next round of paying off the 2012 bond? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct. So the.
When is that, when is that payable?
Um, that'll be two years from now, in, uh, the same timeframe.
All right, thank you. Additional comments, questions?
Yeah, and so the, sorry, Mayor. Um, so, yeah, the, the, the ordinance, uh, is up for, um, for your consideration tonight, ordinance number 3075. Uh, and, and again, I, any, any questions you have, um, our advisors and bond council are with us tonight um, to try and help clarify anything or answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I, I don't have any issues with the, uh, bond issuance itself. I think the only thing that jumped out at me, and that the risk that Mr. Buckamire might be on the line, is the, uh, 500,000 designated for the risk and resiliency system that the council has discussed a bunch. We, we like that system, but we thought it was too much. But this doesn't in any way really obligate us necessarily to go with such a system. That's, that's the only thing that jumped out at me as a slight concern.
Uh, other comments on that issue?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, that item had been proposed for addition to our capital facilities plan a couple of times, at least once. And, uh, we declined it. I, um, I tend to think that we shouldn't be making large expenditures on capital facilities for things that aren't in our capital facilities plan as a process matter. Um, but also, I'm not certain of the utility of the system to, uh, serve the purpose of, of protecting our water supply and protecting the clearwell. However, Mr. Buckenmeyer also indicated that the city of Oak Harbor was interested in it for the purpose of protecting their water line. Um, maybe he would like to speak to that.
Mr. Buckenmeyer, are you on?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this, um, you're right, this particular project or, uh, material or, or, uh, equipment was, was proposed a, a bit back. At that point, we were sort of focusing on the leak detection aspect of, of the equipment. Since that time, the EPA has issued our, uh, risk and resiliency, excuse me, A, risk and resiliency requirement that all water systems must, uh, comply with. So we've hired a consultant to, to prepare that for us. Um, Richard Curtis is our, is our consultant. He takes, and, and this risk and resiliency is, is one that is designed to look at, um, acts of terrorism or tampering, or, I'm going to pronounce this wrong, but malevolent acts. You know, people intentionally trying to mess with, with the water system. And, um, Mr. Curtis recognized that, and I'm going to go ahead and say this on, on camera, that our entire water plant is unprotected, except for a fence and a buzzer at the front gate. Um, there are no, um, security systems in place within the entire plant, uh, exterior and interior. And he also noticed that the transmission lines are likewise unprotected. Um, anyone can access a valve or a ARV or a PRV and introduce things into that system that would cause it harm. And because of the, you know, somewhat vital nature, not only do we serve, you know, what, 50,000 to 60,000 customers, we also serve the, uh, the naval base. Um, we thought it was a good idea to look at a system that, that not only did the leak protection, but also helped us with the proximity, um, type detection and, and protection of the plant itself. So this, the craily sensing, um, equipment has the ability to detect, uh, anyone that touches the exterior of the water, of that water pipeline that has fiber optics in it. So if you operate a valve, if you touch an ARV or a PRV, it, it immediately sends a signal and tells you within three feet of where that is happening in, in real time. It also has the ability to, for instance, if we buried a fiber optic cable around the outside of the water plant, it would then, in real time, detect, um, individuals that approach the exterior of the water plant. You can tune up the sensitivity to tell you, you know, if they come within 10 feet or five, whatever. That, that's a, a user-defined thing. So that, that, in conjunction with a, a camera system that, you know, where something would automatically turn on a camera system when, when, um, intrusion was detected, is really the, the, the selling point, I think, for the, for this system this time around. In addition to that, like we explained before, it does have the ability to detect leaks within that system as small as three millimeters in real time, the instant that they happen, and within three, I think it's three to, 10, 10, three to 10 feet of where they are. In addition to that, um, there is the ability to provide this intrusion detection as a third-party service. So if, if someone else who's served by our fiber system wanted to put a band of fiber around their facility, bury it, do whatever you want, um, we could then provide, um, 24/7 intrusion protection, or detection at least, not protection, for that, for those customers. Because we have somebody at the water plant 24/7 monitoring a system, so. That's really the, the essence of the, of the, of the equipment. We have entered it into the capital facilities plan. It's, it's for the, for the next update that's coming up. Um, unfortunately, I guess, if you might, or have everyone look at it, this report came out, you know, in not enough time for us to get it into CFP before we, before we proceeded with it. And then here comes a bond issue that allows us to spread that payment out over 20 years. Um, and everything just kind of fell in, fell into place, so.
Um, Mayor Carter has a question.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a kind of a two-part question. The first one would be for, uh, Mr. Buckenmeyer. My understanding that it would be 50,000 of this would be responsible from the Anacortes citizens, paid out over the 20 years. And the second part would be, uh, maybe for, uh, Ms. Swetnum. If, since Anacortes is responsible for the water, if we had the chance to act to protect the water, and we did not, if something did happen to the water treatment, someone accessed it, added something to it, would Anacortes ultimately be responsible for negligence?
I'll take the first part. So the payment, the bond issues being paid for, um, by regional customers, and that's, that's basically based on their, on the amount of consumption. So based on that, Anacortes retail, our retail system is about 11, 10, 11% of the, of the cost. I just use 10% because it's a round number, it's probably a little low. So that means that $50,000 of this would be paid for by Anacortes residents over 20 years. And I think we got 25 cents a year or something in there, I can't remember.
Yeah, we have, our retail system has about 10,000 ERUs equivalent residential units. So it's kind of, it's, it's easy to do the math when you use 10%. Give you 50,000 divided by 10,000 ERUs, uh, that's, uh, $5 per ERU.
Per year? Per, yeah. Is that per year or per month, Steve? I can't remember which.
Uh, that's, that's for the whole project. So, so 50, 50,000 divided by 10,000 ERUs, five, that's a quarter per year.
25 cents a year per resident, okay.
About, about two cents per month, per, uh, resident. For the life of the bond.
Are there any other questions?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young?
Yep.
And the second one from Ms. Walter.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Okay, well, yeah, well, second question from Carter, and, and we'll go on to Mr. Young.
Okay, uh, yeah, thanks, thanks for the question. I think that's a really, a really good consideration. Um, you know, it's, it's maybe not a, a super simple question to answer. I think what you're really asking is whether the city would incur liability for not moving forward with purchasing the system. Um, and I think that, you know, from the, from a liability standpoint, there is liability if the city reaches a duty of care that it owes to its constituents. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that the liability issue would require the city to necessarily purchase this particular system. But probably if, um, you know, the risk and resilience study has identified some issues that need to be addressed to, to meet basic standards of care, um, then, then those would need to be addressed in some way. So, does, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Walters and Mr. Young?
I imagine the, the standard of care here really is, uh, a camera system, not the fiber optic loop detection thing. And I would think that the camera system would be the thing that we would want at the water treatment plant anyway. So that if we detect, uh, vibration in the ground, we can know with certainty if it's a, a squirrel, a deer, a human, or a human with some malevolent intent. So I would think that we would want to pursue a camera system at the water treatment plant. Possibly in addition to this shiny object, fiber optic device, but definitely, um, pursue a camera system. That, that's the thing that everybody has that we lack.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yes, um, just to make sure I'm clear, by supporting this ordinance, we're not necessarily committing to this whole process of this particular item. It just only allows it to be baked into our bond process should we decide to push it forward. That's part one of my question, is that correct? Is that a yes or, yes, okay, thank you, Darcy, for the nod. Um, also, um, part of that is for Mr. Buckenmeyer, it really, part of what we are attempting to do and may be able to do is similar to what we may do with dark fiber in that if we have a customer such as Oak Harbor from a business perspective, it can also help with those additional costs that we may associate and incur as a result of having this preventative measure in place. Is that not correct, Mr. Buckenmeyer?
Yeah, I, yeah, that, that is correct, yeah. Both from a proximity detection and a leak detection perspective, yeah. There's a, there's possibilities to sell the service.
Got it, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, because tonight, what we're really voting on is the ability to do that and have the bandwidth to be able to, um, push these and other items should we decide that that's what we wanted to do. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm very happy with it, and I'm willing to move forward.
Any other discussions tonight?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Well, since, since I, I started that whole, uh, discussion off, I just wanted to thank Mr. Buckenmeyer for reminding us exactly why the council initially did not like this idea. Um, so you just need to remember that when you present the contract for what we actually, what, what we actually come up with in the future. There may be some, some better idea out there than this particular shiny object that the council was pretty clear that we didn't want for that amount of money. But maybe based on this, this being a bond issue and, and the latest numbers that were just explained to us, I think we could probably get behind something in the future. But I just wanted to make it clear that $500,000 doesn't necessar, doesn't necessarily have to go for that particular system. And I think that's what council is, is trying to convey.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Also, is the, the next $500,000 listed in the ordinance, is that for the piece of property that we have already discussed?
Yes, that, that's correct. That's, or the parcel that's already been purchased, there, uh, is a reimbursement, excuse me, a reimbursement declaration that was, uh, that was put in the files in the finance department that allows us to reimburse ourselves for that parcel of property.
Okay. Mayor Gear. Ms. Molton.
Uh, Mr. Buckenmeyer, the risk and resiliency report, um, is pretty compelling to me. Water security is one of the most important issues, I believe, that faces us as a city and a region. And I think if I knew a little bit more about the system, the leak detection, is that part and parcel with the security system? Are there different levels we could explore? Um, I, I think that if, it doesn't, I would like to know more, more about it. I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to it, but I would like to know more as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, more discussion, or we'd like to take some action?
Uh, Mayor Gear, if I may, we do have a rating call scheduled later this week with standard and pores. We are required to, um, to get a rating for the bond before we go into the market. Uh, and it has been explained to us that it's, uh, favorable to have the bond ordinance adopted by council before that rating call. Um, and that's part of the, the timing, part of the reason the schedule works out the way it does with the second reading tonight with that meeting later this week.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Uh, I move that we approve ordinance 3075, the revenue bond, as presented. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young, to approve ordinance 3075, a revenue bond. Is there any additional conversation? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
I just want to say, uh, before the virus had started, I had stopped in and talked to Mr. Buckenmeyer. And he had explained to me in detail how this whole system works. So I don't know if it would be, um, helpful in the future if you were able to do that during a meeting, or possibly if anyone had questions, they could call him one-on-one and do it over Zoom or Skype, uh, to get more info.
and do it over Zoom or Skype, uh, to get more info on it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, so at this time, we're going to move on to item five C, which was added to tonight's agenda. It's an easement and right-of-way agreement for a water pipeline by Skagit County Dyken District and Irrigation Improvement District, number twelve. Ms. Swetnum will present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, and thank you to council for amending the agenda to consider this easement tonight. Um, the easement is intended to give the city access to, uh, an area on a piece of property owned by Dyken District Twelve, uh, to allow for both the construction and the permanent placement of a water line. And this is the, the raw water line project that, uh, Public Works has been talking about. Um, and in fact, I think it came up earlier tonight. Um, so the, the layout of the property is that the Dyken District owns it, uh, but the requested easement goes across the field that they've currently leased out to a tenant who has an organic farm. Um, and so the reason for the last-minute addition is that, uh, we've been working closely with the Dyken District and we're negotiating terms of easement up to last Friday uh, out of concern that they had on, uh, what the, the potential impacts of the operation and construction might be on their farmer. Um, so we were able to reach agreement, and the commission considered this at their meeting this afternoon. Um, they voted unanimously to approve the easement as it was, as it was presented to you all. Uh, the timing challenge with this is, uh, that the, the city thought contractor IMCO here to start work on the project, and in fact, they started staging last week after getting a head nod from the executive director. Uh, but their commission wanted to really wait to start work until the easement's fully executed. So the city's contractor is on standby, waiting to start work until this thing gets executed. Uh, so, so staff is recommending approval and asking, um, if, if council approves to take action tonight. Uh, I mean, I know Mr. Buckenmire probably has more details about the specifics of the project, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the document.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, um, in reading through the document, I, I think it's pretty straightforward as to, you know, what it entails for both parties. I guess what I'd like a little bit more information on and our thoughts behind, the cost associated with using it for this amount of time, you know, for the Dyken District. I guess I was looking at the price tag, and I was just trying to, um, wrestle with, I know what the value is to the city as a whole in executing this process and this project. It's essential that we have that work area, but I was just wondering how we came up with that price. I thought it was just a little much, but, you know, if it's necessary, I'm okay with it. But I'd like for you to, you know, talk a little bit about it. That's really what I'm asking, thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, and there was a formula used to come up with a dollar figure, and I'm hoping that Mr. Buckenmire is still here, because it was, I believe Eric Scherbek did the calculation.
Yeah, can, can everyone else see me, camera, camera?
They're still there.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's no hard, fast rule on what you pay for what essentially is a permanent easement. So it's, uh, it's, we're going to have the full use of that property with what turns out to be thirteen pages of restrictions, but, um, which is another issue we'll come back to later. Um, so we've, we've enjoyed a great relationship with the Dyke District over, I don't, decades. Um, we have two other existing easements on that property, uh, not, you know, in other, in other places for pipelines, and they've always been more of a handshake, you know, whatever. So we were proceeding on that basis for quite a while, last six months, and then out of the blue comes, uh, a, a new commissioner, which has made our life extremely hard and rather, um, rather hard to negotiate with. Let's just, I'm going to, I'm going to be real polite, take the high road there. Um, so that price is what, what we ended up with, right?
To follow up on my question, if I might, Mayor Gear? Um, so really, at this point, the value and the time value associated with getting this project move, moving forward, it is the best we could do at that moment. And I think what you added, uh, in your description of what we've achieved by is that it is a permanent easement for us should we need any further work going forward. Is that not correct, Mr. Buckenmire?
Yeah, in the future, if we ever have to, you know, repair, maintain, you know, do any other work on that particular pipeline, um, we, we'll be covered by this. If we have to put another pipe in or do any kind of, you know, additional work out there besides just repair, we're going to have to, we'll be in front of these guys again getting another easement. Um, so, uh, Public Works Committee will, will, will be talking about some other options that we have, um, as a municipality, um, on that property.
Thank you.
Initial questions? Discussion? Mr. Walters? Can't hear you. You're muted.
I think the request was to authorize this tonight, so I would move that we do so.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Multon. So we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Multon. Is there, is any more discussion or questions? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cleo McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Multon?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else to go to the order? All right, hearing nothing, I will adjourn the meeting. Have a lovely evening, see you all sometime this week. Bye-bye.